It is six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to today's city council meeting, City of Series, Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey is absent from tonight's meeting. He will be viewing via Zoom, but not participating. District two, Councilmember Vera.
Yeah.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation by Jim Stachow from the Harvest Presbyterian Church, and followed by the pleasure of allegiance. He is via Zoom.
Thanks for allowing me to pray. Let's do that. Generous God, you have given us so much. We are grateful for our city, its leaders, its staff, our businesses, our schools, our neighbors. We pray that tonight's meeting would be done in a humble spirit of gratitude. Guide our discussions and our decisions. May we reflect the goodness shown to us, and we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Citizens Communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. We'll now start with in-person comments. I have one yellow card. Ishmael. And just so you know, sir, there is an item on the agenda, but you're more than welcome to speak now if you like.
Okay, so my name is Ismail Tiberos. I'm the vice president of Series Youth Baseball. I'm here with Jorge Guerrero, who's the president. And we had planned on being on at the last meeting, because we also got a phone call about our fees being raised to fifty dollars. It looks like soccer beat us to the punch, and they were here last week. We read all about it. And so we wanted to show up as well and voice our displeasure with it, with the rate hike that we're looking at, because we were already looking at raising our fees, because the hundred and fifty dollars that we charge, it has been for four years. And we saw that this year we weren't going to stay afloat with charging that. So with the rate hike from the city, that would really put our fees just at maybe a two hundred and twenty-five-dollar mark, and I don't think that's affordable for a lot of our families. So I was here in protest of that.
Doug, what is the official response to the contract that is being looked at?
So right now, we're going to be entering negotiations with CYB later on, coming in, I think, November, December, closer to their end of their contract, but we're going to be talking about that, and then also we'll be contacting all the council members we set up. Like we do any other negotiations, keeping all of you informed of what's going on, and you'll be involved in that behind the scenes, as far as people know what's going on at the time, and we'll show CYB what our costs are actually going into the negotiations and what we have to do to somehow meet in the middle.
Ishmael, sorry, I just want to make sure that my microphone is on. So I understand your concerns, and I hope that this issue does get resolved, especially what you heard that day. And I don't know if you know this, but that contract is on the agenda. And it doesn't look like there was any changes made to that contract. So obviously, it would be unfair for us to do to them and not do for you. That makes any sense. So they will keep us informed. Ishmael, I do understand your concern and the entire organization. I do appreciate you coming to the city council meeting to express that.
Okay, the other thing, too, that I want to talk about was the ARPA funds that were allocated to CYB to do park improvements, and it looks like those funds are now gone. Is that something that we're going to get back, or how does that work?
So are you referring to the ARPA funds that were invested into the facility, the hundred thousand dollars? And it was two hundred thousand dollars that were allocated originally?
Originally, yes, and then we did some improvements, and I think there was a hundred and sixty thousand or so left over. And we were told that those funds were no longer available, because the city was in its own deficit.
That's not correct. It's my understanding that we invested over a hundred thousand into the facility. I don't want to sit here and get into too much of that, as far as that's concerned, but I think that having a conversation is warranted with our staff and you guys in regards to that, and you will be contacted.
Okay, so moving forward, we're still going to get that money to do the improvements that we're looking at?
So it's my understanding that they finished all the projects that you guys had requested up to the hundred thousand. It's my understanding, but I don't know what's next after that, if there's any other particular projects. But like I said, I don't want to spend too much time focusing on that today, but I would like for you guys to sit down, and also Doug, sit down with them and kind of go over that.
Okay.
That sounds okay?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we're going to the next. Anybody without a slip is welcome to come up, and just please state your name, sir.
It's Jorge Guerrero. I'm the president of Series Youth Baseball. And the understanding that we had was that that ARPA money was allocated to CYB. I got requested, I was told to get the estimates for the next projects that we wanted. We submitted that in time and form, the way that I was requested. However, then I received a phone call that it was going to go into another project, part of another project, which that project has been on the desk for about a year, because I took, I became the president of CYB September eleventh of last year. So at that point, they had told me that the lights for Field Three was going to be done. And we've been waiting. We submitted the estimates for that project to make it part of the ARPA funds, and nothing has been done. Now we see that there is going to be a gazebo built for a couple million dollars when it's more important that the safety of our players, the safety of the kids playing in our fields, and something like that. So that's why we wanted to make sure that it was understood. I don't know what the situation was. We don't understand why it was pushed back and not, it hasn't been done. It's been on the agenda. It's been on the works for about a year now, so.
Sir, being that you made those comments about the gazebo, I think it's warranted that you'd understand that. We had a city council meeting where we had an agency talk to us about solar power. And in that case, we are looking into putting lights as CYB, which not even one light, you could be able to build with a hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking into that, and that's going to come back at a future city council meeting. So you won't, so even if you did have that hundred thousand dollars, these lights will get you multiple lights that will go way beyond that. So just so you understand that.
When is that project going to take place?
Like I said, in a future city council meeting, yes.
Because that, like I said, I've heard about that project a year ago, so that's why. I don't know how long in the future.
Well, we'll do our best to inform you, so that way you have the correct information, because I could understand that there's a lot of social media posts out there that are.
No, that was said to me in.
I'm just saying, in general, in general, I would love to make sure that you get that information, so that way you can let everybody else know that we are investing into CYB, and that was the whole purpose when we were negotiating ARPA funds, was to invest back into the community as we have. And I think that going beyond the two hundred K by investing into those lights will be even greater than we would be able to do with the two hundred K.
Is there a timeframe?
Like I said, in the future, when we bring that item back. So I mean, if I were to sit here and tell you a timeframe, then why would I give you a timeframe if there isn't really a timeframe until we have?
I mean, the reason why I asked for a timeframe is because the future is wide open. So it's been a year, and we're already in the present from the past future.
And you know, without due respect, before, before you were the president, there wasn't even a consideration of investing in CYB before I brought that item to the council. So I understand exactly where you're coming from, that for many years, there hasn't been investments, but this very council has been investing into our community for many years. So I totally understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Do you mind one second? Councilman would just like to make a comment, if you don't mind, surely.
The timer found, I'm sorry. Is it on?
I can't see the timer. You please notify me, since I can't see the timer.
Right, we have the timer over here, so we'll keep.
You'll let us know, okay. Oh, I think that was all, surely. The floor is yours.
Early Rogers, Series, California. You, as the mayor, went before the Planning Commission, or you didn't go, you sent a message about a chicken business?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Why? Wouldn't that be for you to take care of when it gets to the city council and not the Planning Commission? I personally, as a citizen, would like a choice of chicken. I know this sounds kind of petty, but why were you trying to influence the Planning Commission?
I think that it's, it's inappropriate for you to say that I'm influencing, not if you would mind if I can respond, surely, without due respect.
Well, let me tell you this.
Okay, if you're not going to let me answer that.
As the mayor, you could have went as a private citizen to the Planning Commission. You sent a message as the mayor. You sent somebody with a message as the mayor. That's undue influence. That's all I have to say.
Surely, I will respond. You're welcome to sit or stand and listen to my response, but as the council appoints planning commissioners, they are also responsible for making the right decisions, as a flawed decision that was made by that council. Let me finish.
After they make their decision, it comes to you. You seem to have a.
No, that's incorrect. That's incorrect. The planning commission and the city council are two different things.
Well, if you wait long enough, they end up on the city council. That's all I have.
That's fine, surely, and just so the audience understands that there is a lot of misinformation out there, and like I said, the planning commission is appointed by the city council. And the reason why, surely, the reason why that I sent someone up there to talk in my presence was because I was actually at a student conference that was with the school district. I didn't want to get into the details, because I am a football coach, and I wasn't able to attend. I can't be everywhere.
Well, as a mayor, don't stop business. We are too small a town to support all these businesses. People come off the freeway from other towns. We are bedroom town. Let the people have a choice when they get here. If you want to say no as a citizen, fine, but before it becomes, before the city council, to me, you have no say so.
Actually, I do. I am the mayor of this city, and I have a responsibility that we don't continue to do, such as we've done by building gas stations next to gas stations. And it is my opinion that we should not be building chicken places next to chicken places, and that's just my opinion. I am the mayor. So like I said, I would defend myself, because I think that it's important that everybody understands that. And I'm sure that the series career will have a field day with my comments. Is there anybody else?
Good afternoon. I've never been in none of these meetings before. It's the first time. So still a little nervous.
No worries.
You know, I've been a resident here for a long time. You know, I graduated in oh-three from serious high, and I've seen this place go from dirt. You know, for being racist. You know, we're flourishing now. We're sitting. You know, I've been coaching the CYSO for the last ten years. And I just want to know what your plan is to keep all the costs down over there. I've seen kids, you know, get pregnant. I've seen kids go to jail. And I mean, what's your plan?
Are you asking what my plan is for CYSO?
Yeah, if you're going to keep the cost down, are you trying to bring it up next year?
No, I clearly answered the question earlier in regards to what we're planning on doing. That city manager and staff will be contacting them in regards to the contract. So I think that it's safe to say that once that happens, that we can bring it back to council.
So that's something that we're going to address later?
It will be addressed. Yes, because as the city manager had mentioned, that there is a, what day were we negotiating in November? So in November, that will be the opportunity when we discuss the contract, because that's what we're talking about, right, the contract.
Because I mean, I know the officers are here. When you drive down the street, you're starting to see the XIB again, the Sur Tresce, all that stuff.
Okay, so are we talking about SY, are we talking about that? We're talking about two different things. Because I'm a coach, and I would ask for the respect. I've been living here my entire life since I was five years old, and I've seen it. Okay, so I'm a hundred percent with you, and you are correct. And if we do not do things for our community and our children, that they will be led to joining gangs, and that is not what I'm all about. I'm going to tell you right now, this is the reason why I continue to advocate for investing into our community. So I mean, hopefully, that lets you understand a little bit about myself.
Are you going to be committed to keeping the cost the same?
Am I going to be committed to keeping the contract as it is currently?
Yes.
In my personal opinion, like I said in the last city council meeting, I did not agree with the hike. I hope that answers your question.
It doesn't, it doesn't answer it. I'm asking, are you going to be committed to keeping everything the same?
I, as the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Port the idea.
Decision now, you can't vote later.
I know that. I know that, but I'm just, I want him to understand that, because he obviously has concerns, and I think it's appropriate. Like I said, when it came to CYSO, I didn't, I did not know anything about it. And I was not fond of the idea that they were going to be increased by fifty dollars. So obviously, my position still stands. So the answer is yes.
Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
Salvador Puga.
I'm sorry.
Salvador Puga.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it, Salvador. And if you would like to have a conversation outside the dice, I'd be more than welcome. Sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
Well, good evening, City of Series, City Council, Justin Farkas, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis, and have some great news for you all. So we are in the last week of our session here. It's crunch week. So Assemblyman Alanis is going to be spending the remainder of his week through the weekend listening to hundreds of bills come across both houses in attempts to make their way up to the governor's desk. The assemblyman had the privilege of having two bills signed by the governor in the last two weeks. One is a part of a greater retail theft package, expanding the organized retail theft task force provided by CHP to other forms of law enforcement. We're actually the only Republican a part of that bill package, so we're really working hard to work across the line, make sure that our law enforcement officers have what they need to succeed in combating retail theft. We also had another bill signed today, so that's really great news. That's our third of the year. And we still have another three waiting on his desk for his signature. Another five moving through the both houses of the legislature right now. And we should have some answers as to whether the governors in both houses see those bills to be positive for the constituents in the respective districts, but really importantly, the constituents of Assembly District Twenty-two. So eleven bills standing, hope to see all of those. We had five passed last year, so should everything go? Ideally, we're looking at sixteen bills passed in our first term in office. We're really excited about that. And really excited to finish out the year strong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
We do have two raised hands on Zoom. The first person is Rex. Rex, when I allow you to speak, please note that your screen will be viewable to us here in the council chambers.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Rex Heim with WICA, Western Electrical Contractors Association. We have a state-approved apprenticeship program for our electricians that is an earn while you learn system, and they graduate skilled and trained. I'd want to make comments on something that's not on the agenda today, but it was discussed at your last meeting, July twenty-second, I believe, a community workforce agreement with a focus on local hire. I would just like to address, I don't think these agreements, whether it's a community workforce agreement, community workforce training agreement, or project labor agreement, go hand in hand with local hire at all. We actually believe that it hinders the ability to hire locally. Some anecdotes are, in Stockton, they have a PLA, and they did not publish any of their local hire data since doing so. The last time they did that was two thousand and nineteen, and they failed to meet all of their local hire goals. They have a big ballpark project coming, and they had seven local contractors with local employees interested in the job. And due to the project labor agreement, all seven local contractors dropped out. Down in Fresno, there's a PLA where they have local hire goals. And when they had an audit released of their hours, it was actually found that in the non-PLA projects, they had far more local journey-level hours than in the PLA projects. And what all this does is manipulate the marketplace and prevent local contractors from using their local employees. And I would hate for something to happen like that in Series. Another impact that that has on cities and agencies is it restricts and limits bidding. So the number of bids go way down, and we know that when bids go down, the costs go up. In Watsonville, there was a nineteen-million-dollar project put out to bid with one of these CWAs on it, and they only got one bid back at twenty-six million dollars. They actually rejected the bid and rebid that project without the agreement, and they hit it right on the head of the engineer's estimate, and they got a project done for nineteen million dollars. So again, just wanted to kind of add WICA's perspective on these agreements that are talked about, and that if we want to have a discussion about local hire, we're all on board. But there's a lot of discriminatory policies that are in the details of these community workforce agreements. So just wanted to share that with you all, and I'm happy to have a further discussion on ways that we could partner to make sure the people of Series are getting to work for the city's projects. Thank you.
You very much. City has second hand.
Eric Christian. Your mic is muted.
Good evening. My name is Eric Christian. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We're a statewide organization that was formed by union and non-union construction firms twenty-five years ago, solely to oppose discriminatory project labor agreements or community workforce agreements, or whatever euphemism they want to hide behind. We see last month that incredibly, the council discussed this issue. For what reason, we do not know. In an era of hyperinflation, where the last thing you want to do is reduce your bidding pool, you do not want a PLA in place. PLA will reduce your bidding pool, as Fresno just witnessed with its garage nine renovation project, which had one bidder from Los Angeles that came in a hundred and thirty-nine percent over the engineer's estimate. They threw that bid out. Watsonville had the same problem happen. They went out to bid without the project labor agreement. Somebody came in on budget. That's what will happen with the PLA versus without a PLA. Why? Because the big labor special interest that push PLAs represent less than fifteen.
We lost connection, sir. Are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Sorry. In America and in California, the Bureau Labor Statistics shows that eighty-five percent of the construction workforce chooses to wake up and work in a union-free environment. When you reduce those bidders and those workers from being able to work by placing hurdles in their way, which is exactly what a PLA is intended to do, by forcing them to pay union dues, forcing them to pay into union pension plans they'll never invest in, forcing non-union apprentice programs to be excluded explicitly, you make it to where those bidders aren't going, those contractors aren't going to bid your work. So we would just ask that you actually research this. Don't listen to the people that are pushing the monopoly agreement. Look for the studies that are out there that show what they do to cost. Look for the anecdotal evidence that shows what happens when you have PLAs in effect. And please do your homework on this and keep competition open for everybody, not just big labor special interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Did we receive any emails?
No emails were received.
Okay, Public Affairs and Communication is now closed. Is there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on this consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion, unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anybody on the dice that would like to pull an item? Any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Any hands on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Bring this back for a motion.
Make a motion to accept items one through seventeen of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to public hearing. Number eighteen, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Series amending Title Nine, Chapter Sixteen, Parks, Public Property and Public Facilities of the Series Municipal Code to prevent the storage or dumping of items in parks and public areas. And Police Chief, you'll be presenting this item, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Evening, Council. Staff recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Title Nine, Chapter Sixteenth, Series Municipal Code to prevent the storage or dumping of items in parks and public areas. A little bit of background on this. California is home to roughly one-fourth of the nation's unhoused population, and homelessness in California continues to rise. Both the lack of affordable housing and insufficient shelter capacity has led many unhoused individuals to reside in public parks or public spaces. The city's restrictions on overnight camping. Sorry, I'm getting used to this new microphone. With the city's restriction on overnight camping in parks, many unhoused individuals leave the park or public space for the evening, but will leave their amassed belongings in the park or public space. This creates a dilemma for code enforcement. While the individual is not camping in the area, their stuff is often left in a public park or place for days at a time. Currently, the municipal code does not prohibit individuals from storing or dumping items in a public park and retrieving them at their leisure. This one's better. Okay. Currently, the municipal code does not prohibit individuals from storing or dumping items in a public park and retrieving them at their leisure. The additional language added to Title Eight, Chapter Sixteen, will allow code enforcement to enforce Title Nine, which will now prevent individuals from leaving or storing their personal belongings in a park or public place. This prohibition will also prevent the unhoused individual from bringing these items into the park in the first place, knowing that the items can be seized if they are found in the park. The items listed in this are specifically related to things like bicycle parts, appliances, car parts, and things of that type of nature.
That concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers or attended via Zoom that would like to make a comment on this item? Members? Go ahead, sir. Do you state your name?
Genically serious. Chief Perry, can you elaborate on more items? I mean, you know, I know they do something else, but one of the things with all this, that's a great idea. I hope these guys do something for it. The shopping cart issue. A long time ago, State of California put on there, you've seen them, everybody's seen them, says stolen, it's against the law, or whatever, there's a fine or whatever. Is that in part of your request?
We already have a shopping cart ordinance, so that already is in effect.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Council. John Warren, City of Series. I'm kind of looking over this. Well and good, and I think it's a necessary item to tighten up that particular section in our municipal code. But I think the definition of camping needs maybe to be revisited or whatever, because when you're out there camping, you have certain items with you, personal property, things like that. And people have these things, and that's an indication of camping. Your cook stove, your bicycle, your car, your transportation, how you move your camping gear around when you're going from one campground to the other. So I think a definition change might strengthen this ordinance as well. But I would also include things like cars. But I would also include things like cars, RVs, hand carts, pole carts. And all the other things that this. Group of people use to move their property around with. And so if those items were included there, because they bring their car there and park it in the parking lot over at Samara Park all day long. And they're still leaving their property there. So, and they're still camping there even though they may be gone. And not present at that particular time when the officers come around. It was just something to consider when rewriting this ordinance is to include everything. Including the transportation aspect of, 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 uh, of the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Warren, you cannot take the microphone. You okay, sir? Okay, you're good. He's up. We, we just got those two. We'll take care of it for you, Mr. Warren. Short delay. Ladies and gentlemen, while we fix our microphone. You, can you please test it? Make sure it works? We'll, we'll actually replace it right now. Mr. Warren, don't you worry about it, sir. Sure, we have insurance. Need a Velcro that thing. Okay. Anybody else that would like to make a comment? Seeing none. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Was there any emails?
No emails were received.
Okay, so we'll bring this, uh, back to council. The public hearing is now closed. For discussions at the moment, I did see Ms., uh, Councilmember Rosa Linda Vera, who pressed her button first. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I'm kind of chiming in on what they said regarding the, um. Items being left in the park and make sure we're covering everything that needs to be covered. Whether they're sheltered or unsheltered, I know we're seeing mattresses, we're seeing discarded items. I think that as a whole needs to be addressed, um, regardless of their living style or condition. Um, we're also seeing, I know you guys recently resolved or kind of resolved, I know they came back, the RV that stayed at. Brown Park for three weeks and never left. Um, I believe they're back again from what I heard, although I didn't see them this weekend. Um, but they're again leaving stuff, throwing stuff outside the RV, they're leaving stuff and I. Regardless of their living conditions, I just don't think we should have mattresses and the other things. So I think this is a great first step in trying to resolve and address that. As well as hopefully minimizing those that think that it is a campground instead of going to the safe parking. Spot that is free in Modesto, which I think is a preferred place for those that are residing in their vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, chief, how would we go about enforcing this? Would be my question for you, sir.
Uh, it'll, it'll be enforced by code enforcement. Um, I mean, it could be enforced by our, any police officer for that matter, but typically something with, with code enforcement. And for the most part, although I stated, you know. Uh, I gave an example of things like car parts and bicycle parts and whatnot. Essentially, it's to prohibit things that aren't brought into a park or park use. So people go to a park and they may have a picnic or a barbecue or be playing baseball or something of that matter. Um, those things are still allowed to have. It's when you go to a park and now there's. An engine block from a car or multiple bicycle parts left. Or again, abandoned shopping carts and bags of clothes and things like that. These are things that aren't typically brought into the parks and would now be considered prohibited.
Do you possibly elaborate a little bit more on, on the RV and car camping as well, like Councilmember Vera and. Uh, Mr. Warren had stated, I know personally that CYB is a perfect example. On Garrison, on the other side of the park, there's a person that spends most of the day at the park and then at the night. Goes and sleeps in their car right down the road from where our youth practice baseball. Councilmember Vera pointed out an RV that's been staying at parks and I know there are other situations that are going on. How would that be enforced or how could we, uh, word that into this code to enforce that as well?
Well, I don't think we have to word that into here because we have a separate camping ordinance. Um, and now with the new change, uh, out of, um, Oregon with the law, we can start enforcing those again per our previous ordinance.
Would, would that be code enforcement as well? Cause I know a lot of that issue is going to be getting caught in the evening where code enforcement's not typically on twenty-four seven?
It, it could be both. Um. Uh, and again, typically if it's something like a person camping in an RV, um, that might be more appropriate for a police officer response. Because the safety natures, our code enforcement aren't armed. We have no idea who's on the other side of that RV or what they're doing, so that actually might warrant a police officer response.
If a citizen felt inclined to, uh, report that, what they call just the non-emergency line?
Sure. Thank you, chief. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions? Bring this item back for motion.
New approved number eighteen.
A second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to new business. Approving the annual report of the series downtown revitalization area for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And setting a public hearing for September ninth, twenty twenty-four to consider approving the levy assessment for series downtown revitalization area activities. And projects. Julian?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Julian Aguirre, City of Series. The series downtown revitalization was established in nineteen eighty-nine. By the downtown business owners themselves as part of the parking. Business Improvement District, its purpose to generate revenue to assist. In maintenance, upkeep and revitalization efforts of the downtown area. In nineteen ninety-eight, the series planning commission was formally appointed by the council as a designated advisory body. Serve as a series downtown revitalization area board. Under the municipal code section three point oh eight point zero three zero revenues generated by the assessment on businesses located in the series downtown. Revitalization are restricted to be used to pay for projects and activities. That promote and positively contribute the enhancement of the series downtown. On August nineteenth, the CDRAP reviewed. The proposed annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. Revenue and proposed expenditures and depth, the planning commission resolution. Twenty twenty-four dash zero one on attachment H in your packets. Notices have been sent out to businesses in the downtown revitalization area. Via US mail and a public notice to be published, um, regarding the public hearing. Staff recommend date recommends council to approve the CDRAP annual report attachment B. And to set a public hearing for September ninth, twenty twenty-four to consider levying. An assessment of businesses within the CDRAP attachment C. The assessment will remain the same as fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. And will continue to finance the activities and projects planned for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, sir. The public comment period is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Or emails?
No emails received either.
Were you waving your hands, sir? Like you wanted to talk, sir, or you're? Oh, sounds good. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the public comment period is now closed. I'll bring this item back. I see that, uh, Vice Mayor has pressed his button first. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, regarding this downtown revitalization board. Budget and everything that goes along with it. Sometime between now and the time we hear this again next year. And we do an analysis of which. Streets and businesses are actually getting. Improvements or. Whatever we want to call it from this money, because there, I know for sure there are businesses on. The streets that aren't, don't include Fourth Street. That are seeing nothing from this, yet they're paying this every single year and they've, the roads are terrible. The lighting's bad and the landscaping's not being taken care of. So although I support this and will support this tonight. I think it's time to look at really who's benefiting from this most. And maybe there's a, needs to be a new direction in the future. To make sure everybody, all the businesses in this area that's been determined are re, receiving the same amount of service for it.
Thank you.
That's a great question. Um, we did have a meeting with the downtown businesses on August twenty-seven, twenty-second. Uh, we will continue to have bi-monthly meetings to discuss exactly what was presented this evening. Um, so moving forward, hopefully when we come back, we will have, uh, more to present to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera, you're next.
Thank you. I think Brett kind of answered a lot of my questions. Um, were there any, because again, I wasn't at the planning commission, did, were there any questions that came up? When this was presented, since they're technically oversee the downtown. Revitalization board?
No, there was no, there was no questions.
Or comments, because I did, I don't know if they had any concerns or anything, because I didn't see anything in the staff report. Okay, and then, um, I think there was another meeting, you said bi-monthly, is that? Or was it monthly? Cause I remember at the meeting they had asked for one again soon.
We're gonna do monthly, but it's, um, bi-monthly is more easier so that we can. Get the notices out in a timely manner. Um, then monthly, we'll have those set up. So once we get those set up, I will notify a council of those dates.
And are we also working on steps in incorporating the businesses that were not contributing to this funder were missed and not?
Correct. Yes, yes.
And we're working on that. There's already something.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that it's fully. We're being fair to all businesses downtown, as.
Yes, we are working with a third party that does the assessments and mails out the assessments, and so we're working to resolve that issue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Julian, as one of the projects, is it possible to maybe look into adding timed parking, maybe fifteen, thirty minute parking in front of? The coffee shop, the dry cleaners, the salon, some of the stalls on Third Street that, that don't have that requirement where people can park all day? Cause I know that negatively affects some of those businesses that are maybe a five minute stop, but people can park in stalls in front of them and be there all day.
Thank you for that question and I'll be more than willing to take that back to the businesses, um, when we do meet again.
Any additional comments or questions? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve number nineteen.
No second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Is there any council member referrals? Seeing, or do you have, you're gonna push the button? There you go. Councilmember.
I, I guess I'm kind of not sure where exactly it goes, because I haven't had an opportunity to talk to TJ. Captain TJ, um, because he. Oh yeah, I love to go. Um, I know we had mentioned the street teams in the past. Um, and I recently put in the report regarding that gang activity that was really visible over at, uh, Don Pedro Park over the weekend. Um, with very graphic. Comments and negative four-letter words that shouldn't be there at a park that sees well over two hundred students right now over there practicing soccer. And I don't think they should be looking at gang graffiti thirteen, fourteen, and then a few other. Things that were up there is a few words that we shouldn't be using around children as well up on the wall. And, um, I think that just kind of, I wasn't exactly sure where or how this goes. I know one of the parents that had contacted me. Made a recommendation about possibly putting city logos, which will probably go to the mural committee, but I didn't know where to go on that. Um, which they think may be a way of minimizing it or bringing back the street team to start trying to dealing with. Cause I know someone in the member of the public already brought up the gang activity they're seeing on their side of town. And I think one of the other council members mentioned over at the park as well, downtown at Samara. Lot of different components. I don't exactly know who or where to even start this conversation with, but it sounds like there's little aspects that are going on in series that. Maybe we need to kind of address maybe a little bit at a time and I just don't know exactly where and who to go and how to get that started, but. Um, the parent logo was, the parents' recommendation was maybe putting, um, over at. Don Pedro Park where we're seeing most of the graffiti right now on the west side of series. And maybe putting the logos on that, um, wall and I, I think the mayor's on that committee, so maybe this needs to be addressed to the mayor. Um, maybe putting like Central Valley on one and then series high and then Blaker and then the elementary school Sinclair and Don Pedro. Now, but it's maybe a way of trying to keep the gang activity from, you know, tagging over their younger brothers, sisters, or even maybe their own school. That hopefully they would have some pride in, but that was just kind of an idea, trying to find a way to minimize some of the gang activity that we're seeing in town. Um, that was just, I, I don't even know where to start that conversation.
Uh, council member, would you be okay if we brought that back to the mural committee? Irene actually mentioned the same exact thing before I walked in, there's.
Yeah, I talked to Irene about it this weekend.
A bad idea, so.
I stopped her. Luckily she drives by my house and so I stopped.
Seeing that the committee is already set, maybe we can have a discussion. I know Julian is in that committee. I think you're absolutely right that if we put art on the, on those walls, maybe they won't tag them.
That's what I'm hoping. So, um, it was just an idea and yes, I did talk to Irene this weekend when she stopped by.
Irene should be up here, right? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. If you're okay with that, I'll, I will bring that.
Absolutely. I don't, again, I didn't know how to part. Or even how to start this activity, but the, the park doesn't look good right now and I just, I mean, it's almost embarrassing. Not to even have that out there right now with the kids.
Did, I'm sure they already took care of it today, right? They went out there and they. Yeah, I saw the, I, we saw the same post. Yeah, I'm sure everybody on the council did. So it's already taken care of? Okay. Thank you very much, chief, for doing that. Oh, actually Troy. Is our guy for doing that? Yes. Um, is there any, but any more comments or questions on, excuse, excuse me, any more other council referrals? Seeing none. Uh, moving on to reports, I have no reports and we'll start with the council. And we'll start with you, Rosa Linda, since you already got the mic on.
Go left to right. It's all right. Um, economics that you guys probably may have already seen, Big Lots is closing, so, um. Please try to stop local. We want to keep the businesses, we want other businesses to come here. In order to do that, they need to know that we're spending our business, our money here locally. We spend it out of town, they're going to want to go out of town. So we definitely want to attract the businesses that you want. Again, this is businesses you want, the businesses that you want to spend your money at. Um, those are the businesses that we want here. So if. We need to make sure we're supporting them. Um, also had a great opportunity to go out to California Landscaping Supply and tour their, um, great selection this weekend. It was great to see all those flowers. I do work in the agricultural department, so it was great seeing all those beautiful plants. I even came home with some. But I figured that was going to happen. Um, regarding the homeless alliance meeting last week, there is this discussion. Because a few months ago, back in July, we had the hospital actually taxi someone over and drop off an unsheltered person here. And just leave them at the doorstep here. And we do get quite a few homeless that do stop in, um. I don't know what we do and don't do with them. I know when I'm here, I do what I can, at least trying to get the referrals for those who want referrals. Um, but they did have a Zoom call after the meeting that was brought up with the, at the St. Louis Homeless Alliance. About a plan on what we're going to do to address some of the unsheltered individuals that are being released from the hospital and they're just. Giving them a taxi ride to the next, at the time it was the cooling shelter. And we were listed as a cooling shelter, so the hospital released them. And had the taxi drop them off at the community center because we were a cooling shelter. So that conversation has happened, the Zoom call did happen. They are no longer, or at least that's what they're telling me, dropping them off as a cooling shelter here at the community center are going to drop them off. At the Salvation Army, which is now a cooling shelter as well, as well as a warming spot during the winter time. So hopefully that does help him. Um, again, I also those that are unsheltered, there is a safe parking spot for them to sleep in Modesto. So they don't have to sleep at the parks, they can sleep over, um, in Modesto at the safe parking location. The county is also working on finding additional locations to help those that are in need and those are ready to transition out of. The, um, unsheltered or being homeless situation they're in and are ready to make that transition. But again, that's a transition. They have to be ready to take. We can't, and we can't force them to do something until they're ready. Um, we did have the last, uh, family barbecue or community barbecue over at. Dara Street. It was great seeing public and actually Javier as well. We were both there together talking with the community. Um, it definitely is in need of trees. So I look forward to the tree grant to bring trees into the community. Um, as you know, the schools and now the college is open, so please use caution. We've seen. Some pretty drastic accidents and every month we seem to have, almost every month we seem to have a fatality in a car accident related to vehicles. Accidents, so please you caution and be safe while you're out on the streets. Um, just make sure everyone gets home, you and your loved ones. And then lastly, Mitchell and Hatch Road, for those of you who were not out there today, be very thankful. They are flashing red lights. The traffic is backing up past the airport if you're headed into series. And heading out of series on the Hatch and Mitchell Road is actually past Whitmore, so, and it's a flashing red light. So there's only one car at a time going through that intersection. So if you can find another route, that's going to be the best opportunity for you and probably the fastest way, or just come with a lot of patience and a lot of time, because you're going to need it. But that is it for me. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other additional reports?
Yeah, I had the good fortune of attending another wonderful community event on Saturday, the Twalme River Fest out of Twalme River Lodge. It was a great day. They had three bands play, music, food, drinks, everything. Unfortunately, I, I guessed a couple hundred people. With the event like it was, in the space that it was, with the weather like it was, there could have been easily a thousand people. We need to thank those Twalme River Lodge. Board and the people that put that on along with the chamber for always coming up with amazing events for our adult. amazing events for our adults and children in Series. We just need to keep attending these things, otherwise they're going to go away. So keep your eyes out for the calendar for these wonderful events and try to help these organizations out by attending these things. A lot of them are fundraisers just to keep their organizations going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had three. Last weekend, Councilmember Vera and I walked Christmas Tree Lane. We handed out the flyers from our second committee meeting, just passing along the information for them. I believe we have one more trip planned, just to get the information passed out to those members. And then I wanted to bring up that the Parks Department is currently accepting registration for the trunk-or-treat event. That's going to be Saturday, October nineteenth at Whitmore Park. So if you're interested in participating, handing out candy, creating either a trunk or a booth, please see the registration online or come in to the community department and register. It's free. And then last, I just wanted to mention one more time, and if I get any disinformation wrong, Mr. Warren can bring it up, but nine eleven, again, they're going to be doing a salute and a tribute at World Memorial at Whitmore Park at eight in the morning, I believe. Eight thirty, thank you, sir. At eight thirty in the morning, if you're available and you can attend, please do. It'll be a very quick presentation of the colors and should be out of there in thirty minutes, was my understanding. But if you can attend, please do come on nine eleven, which is a Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
I have nothing to report, sir.
City attorney?
Needs to report tonight.
And departments? We'll start with Chief Wise, or actually, both chiefs.
Just real quick. Yeah, we are fully aware from the police department standpoint of the abundance amount of graffiti that we've been seeing around the city lately. Some of us that have been around here a while think it might be driven by maybe some of the kids of some of the older gangsters that maybe used to run around here. Really, I mean, a good solution to that problem, and I think it's something that needs to start being thought about, is definitely bringing back the Street Crimes Unit, no doubt about it. Some certainly easier said than done, but something that that needs to be considered. Our patrol staff, we're busy going to calls and things like that. Our street crimes unit or the gang units are the ones that can get the pulse of what's going on in the community and figure out who's who and who's doing these type of things and usually put a stop to it quickly. But as it relates, right now, we're putting a Band-Aid on it. Where, there was a little mix-up of funding as it related to painting over the graffiti. We've worked that out now, and that's being done. But for a long-term solution, I feel that the Street Crimes Unit would be a best way to solve problems like this. Again, as we did in the past, I saw how that worked in the past, and it was very effective. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With my recent appointment to Fire Chief, we were able to recruit from my old position, and I'm proud to introduce you to Chief Andrew Hunter, who is our new Assistant Chief for Modesto Fire. With that new position, he will be taking over as your liaison for Series and Modesto Fire Department. So I look forward to having my Monday nights back, and Chief Hunter will be attending these meetings from now on. And I'll still be here from time to time, filling in for him. So thank you.
Chief. Is there anybody? I wasn't sure if Joey was next, so, no? Okay, let's do the nods of the heads. Nods of the heads. Thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, we will move on. Is there anybody on Zoom? I usually ask for the counter supervisor. Is he on Zoom?
No, I don't see him on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no closed session, so the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.